Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the thirtieth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. I see that there are some minutes to approve.
I move we approve the regular minutes of the thirteen, ten, six, twenty-two, fourteen, ten, thirteen, twenty-two, and sixteen, ten, twenty-seven, twenty-two meetings as previously circulated, be approved by the commission and the regular and executive session minutes of the tenth session, nine, eight, twenty-two meeting as previously circulated. Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, the minutes are approved. Moving into our hearings calendar, calling other business agenda item number twenty-nine, liquor commission discussion regarding liquor commissions delegation to managing director's office to retain an independent contractor to investigate complaints against the liquor commission and liquor administration. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Buckley, Commissioners, Assistant Administrator of Liquor Commission Staff, Krishna Jaram, Deputy Managing Director. Commissioners, a few weeks ago, I was here before you all seeking your approval to undertake a systemic review of aspects of the liquor commission's operations on a related matter. During the course of twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, there were a number of complaints that were that were brought forth by by three individuals, numerous complaints however. And so, given the current status of the liquor commission, where we're still searching actively for an administrator, we're still looking for a chief investigator. And given the fact that we are still in the process of identifying a new commissioner as well, we thought it would make sense if we come to you and seek the delegation of authority for us to go out and independently contract with an entity to undertake these investigations into these complaints. So that's what we're here seeking today, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
I understand this request is specifically related to these various complaints filed by those individuals.
Correct, so it will, the 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 scope of what this contract will look at will be specifically a set of complaints that were received in the course of twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three.
And when you are talking about an independent contractor to investigate these complaints, did you have any thoughts or comments on that at this time?
Sure. So so as we as we mentioned, the last time I was here a few weeks ago, Quai Chan is with our office and she is undertaking a systemic review. We wanted to make sure that those were two separate efforts entirely. And so therefore, when we're talking about an independent contractor, we will be going through a procurement process, a request for qualifications. We think most likely a law firm makes the most sense in this instance, and so that's something that we're developing right now, we're working with the city procurement office as well as city attorneys in terms of drafting that in the appropriate manner, but that's right now, we're thinking it will likely be a law firm to come in and look at those issues.
I don't know if you have knowledge of this, but you said these complaints have been pending twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Do you know how long they've been pending or if anything has happened with these complaints so far?
Some of the complaints have been addressed, however, because they they are from the same subset of individuals who 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 introduce these these concerns. And some of these are overlapping. We thought we would take all of them and give them to independent contractors so we could get a fresh look at even the ones that were addressed previously because they are integrated, they do come from the same individual, individuals. So so to answer your question, some some of them have been addressed, some of them not, and we want to just freshly fresh eyes.
I for one, and of course, I only speak for myself, I'll let the other commissioners comment as well, I for one, however, am pleased with this request, I do think fundamentally, whenever there's a complaint filed against the commission related to either policies or conduct and staff or even leadership, those complaints need to be addressed promptly and they need to be addressed impartially with impartiality and with objectivity. I believe this satisfies that, so I I'm pleased that the managing director's office has made efforts to to do that for these specific complaints that they have been pending for some time. Also, I I believe these complaints, the nature and scope of these complaints are rather comprehensive. So I I believe that having independence review outside of the commission, even outside of the managing directors office, but at least at the direction of an agency outside of the commission is appropriate in this matter. And I think that would further instill some trust from the public perspective that this is being handled seriously, promptly, and with impartiality, so I personally am pleased that you've come to us with this request, I thank you for that, and I thank you for the managing directors office support in that process. Commissioners, any other comments or questions?
I also thank you guys for all of your support of the liquor commission. I like the way that this dovetails well with Wade's system assessment because that was to take a look at the system in totality without looking at any individual instances. And here we'll have some independent eyes to look at some specific instances to see how that dovetails in with our systemic analysis. And so I I think these will, these will be two good ways to have independent review of the processes that we have in place and hopefully get to a better place of the group.
And I I echo both, Commissioner, Chair Buckley, Commissioner, just so sorry. Comments, I think it's great that we're going to be having the ability or having all the folks come to us in these two separate things and also having it shown that it's outside of us, right, someone else looking in, someone else looking in on both. And that I think is something that can be shown out there to the public that we are taking their concerns and want to address to them. That we want this to be better. So again, I thank you for all moving forward with these two types of requests last week, and this one, I look forward to working with through these two things as well.
Yeah, and I would just like to clarify and confirm, I believe you said this, but I just want to confirm for the record. This is only relating to these complaints, I think we also have some work to do in developing some policies and a system to ensure that future complaints that are filed against the commission have a proper place and are dealt with appropriately and promptly. This isn't going to address future complaints, this is addressing what's on the table currently.
So only address complaints that we've received today.
Yeah, so the commission still has to address the broader issue of of how to to kind of process complaints in a timely fashion. Point of order, is there any direction we need for the commission or is this?
They just agreed to the delegation, this is not scheduled for a vote by the commission. Just similar to the the item pertaining to the strategic advisor.
Well, based on the comments, I believe we certainly will delegate authority to the managing directors office to retain an independent contractor to investigate complaints mentioned against the liquor commission and the liquor administration.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Moving into our license applications, calling a special license application agenda item number one, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-six-two dash one, two-three dash zero-one-four-six-two dash two, and two-three dash zero-one-four-six-two dash three from Kelly O'Neil's LLC.
Yes, really, Rick, and reflect wine liquor's concept, may I have a one-week continuance?
Mr. I, one week, is that?
Yes, that would be fine.
Then agenda item number one will be continued one week to the next calendar year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving into preliminary hearings, calling agenda item number two, transfer application number two-two dash two-four-nine-three-three from Green Ocean Ventures LLC.
Yes, matter of record, in fact, to my right, Roxanne Okazaki is the one of the owners of the premises. In the record, if like Wayne, the press council, well, they've been, they're on the second temporary license and they have good little problems.
Um, I got a quick question, Mr. Lu. So looking at the floor plan, um, I remember the location that it's currently at now, there was some outside seating that was out there, are they planning to continue that or is that going to be separate?
It's the next matter on the agenda.
Okay, got it.
They haven't, they haven't served it down here and so forth.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was tied to this one or the following one, that's all the questions I have, okay, that's all the questions I have for number two, thank you.
Thank you.
And we approve transfer for application number two-two, oh, sorry. Oh, okay, that is a transfer application number two-two dash two-four-nine-three-three.
Second, there's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, transfer application number two-two dash two-four-nine-three-three is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number three, request number two-three dash zero-four-zero, excuse me, request number two-three dash zero-zero-four-nine-nine from Green Ocean Ventures LLC.
For the record, Roxanne Okazaki, owner, is familiar with councils, we look regarding the floor plan, she is putting a gate around the on the outside to to delineate the premises, you know, from the outside people.
So that's the second exhibit, exhibit P, yes.
I would just note for the record for any motion that the effective dates for this request would be, or the effective date of the permanent premises increase would be the date upon which the transfer of the restaurant class license.
That that is correct. So, Mr. Lu, just so I can confirm, looking at this floor plan, so we're talking about this additional space here, yes? The outside?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and so you're gonna put, you said fencing up, correct? Do you have an idea of how many seats you might have out there?
Eighteen to twenty.
Eighteen to twenty, okay. Um, Mike, so anything I'm going to say is I think, want to make sure that if you're gonna have that many seats out there, I'd like to for you to kind of work at trying to keep a dedicated server out there during the times you're going to be serving alcohol, just so we can make sure people are not handing within their own group, because you never know how many people will be sitting in their own group of tables. And you know, obviously, that area is a high-traffic area right next to, I believe, the school, right? Next door, yeah, a little bit further down, correct, so just make sure we, if it's possible to have someone that's dedicated out there to make sure we don't have passing there.
You understand, yeah, but right now, they're stopping people from drinking.
Yeah.
They have somebody, you know.
Watching that too, okay, got it. All right, I have no other questions.
I move we approve request number two-three dash zero-zero-four-nine-nine.
Second, there's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations. Hearing and seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, request number two-three dash zero-zero-four-nine-nine is approved with an effective date of the increase upon the issuance of the transfer license.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number four, request number two-three dash zero-one-four-eight-seven from Repeties Provisions LLC.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioner, quickly feel company for this region. On my right is Charles Clark, last name C, L, A, R, K, as a member manager. We have a seizure, investigative report, have those figures and since of reference there too. If I may add, the anticipation of it. Comments? Basically, this area, outside footprint is currently in use, but only food only, obviously, there's a manager and a dedicated server in that area watching that the alcohol does not come on into that area. That will continue, if this extension is granted, it will continue, there's also planters with sanctions as well as daisy chains marking off that area to avoid a possible, you know, dash and grab kind of situation of alcohol. The entrance, by the way, it's not noted on the on the on the investigative report, but if you know, if there's a doors right here, the entrance to this area is right about, right below that area.
Okay, just one ingress, yes.
Correct. So the egress to the regular dining area is going to be through that patio section.
Right, it's that.
Those two doors go into the regular dining area, and then there's an egress portion in the patio area, get into there.
Correct, okay, because that's a sidewalk area, I believe.
Okay.
My understanding. Yeah, and it will seat sixteen people on the outside area right now, currently.
Okay. So, um, the only comment I would have is that, you know, since then, you can go in and out within that area, let's try to make sure you don't have a table right next to that exit way, because you never know, right? Guys are going to be, who knows, friends grab their food in the, we just want to make sure we're not getting anything beyond there, if it's possible.
And I think it's due to the fire code violation, oh, fire code compliance also, I think, you know, if there's something that there's, it's readily people can exit readily without any obstructions.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Sounds good, I have no other questions.
We approve request number two-three dash zero-one-four-eight-seven.
Second, there's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, request number two-three dash zero-one-four-eight-seven is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number five, request number two-three dash zero-one-five-zero-five from Milli Garden LLC.
Very much, Chair, Commissioner Stephanie Cobard representing, and the gardens LLC, my apologies that Mr. Owen is not here, but he's traveled, didn't want to be here.
No problem, thank you.
With regards to our special, the reason why we're moving the dates is initially when they embarked on this, they thought that Monday would be a good sort of counter programming thing, people would come to it Monday, although unfortunately that has not been the case, so they would, if possible, like to move the dates to Fridays. So it'll be a Wednesday, Friday, Saturday.
Same number of days, correct?
Yes.
And thank you.
I have no questions.
I move we approve request number two-three dash zero-one-five-zero-five.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, request number two-three dash zero-one-five-zero-five approved.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number six, request number two-three dash zero-one-five-one-nine from two-three-seven-five Alawine Property LLC.
Chairman of the Commission, Siria Robert, we all go on behalf of, we find a Y T key for the purposes of this hearing. This time, we have no cleanest investigative report, this is requesting a temporary reduction for a catering of previously approved catering application for February twenty-four to May fourteen. Located in, like, if you wait, find a hotel second floor. The original catering application involved a cafe area on the lower left-hand side of the we're looking to add the restaurant area and the pool, it's the same area that we have a pending restaurant license for. So we just figured we wanted to start serving to the area and in anticipation of the restaurant opening, really can add a restaurant, hopefully opening date around May fourteen, so that's pending right now.
Sorry, May, what did you say?
Um, May fourteen, about May, we're looking open the restaurant, of course, it has to go through the process with the with the staff.
So this should get you up until that point.
It should hopefully, hopefully, yes.
So, quick question, so the time, right, six AM to eleven fifty-nine PM now, not two AM?
No, I I think I'll just type it by, through the process, but no, definitely eleven fifty-nine is consistent with the catering application.
I just want to make sure I'm reading the correct.
Of course. That's it.
Okay, I have no other questions.
I move we approve request number two-three dash zero-one-five-one-nine.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, request number two-three dash zero-one-five-one-nine is approved. Thank you so much. Thank you. Calling agenda item number seven, request number two-three dash zero-one-five-two-three from Pacific Suites LLC.
Robert, we all go on behalf of Redfish Folki Bar by Foodland. This is more a, I guess it's it's related to item, agenda item number six, and this is requesting to amend the floor plan consistent with the reduction that was just approved. In a general, I am. So this floor plan will be consistent with the catering application that was approved in February fourth to May.
That consists with the pool area now, yeah?
Yes.
Versus just that cafe area, correct?
Exactly correct, and we have, we have staff, hotel staff. Monitor there.
Okay, that's a, that's what was my main question or concern, let's make sure, you know, I mean, the pool areas, you can have a lot of families and things like that, you know, we do want to have young kids just grabbing somebody's drink off the table, so if we can make sure that, you know, um, they understand that the staff of the hotel can make sure they watch.
Absolutely.
Or you guys, I mean, we don't want anything happening in your licensed space, definitely not.
Yeah, thank you.
That's the only question I had.
I move we approve request number two-three dash zero-one-five-two-three.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, request number two-three dash zero-one-five-two-three is approved.
Thank you so much.
Calling agenda item number eight, request number two-three dash zero-one-five-zero-six Enigma LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioner Robin Melchon, on behalf of the applicant. And I'm here to be requesting a waiver of rule three dash eighty-two point three, two point one, to allow applicants to apply for a standalone temp.
This is the former Gazan space?
Yeah.
You know when Gaza went out of business?
Oh.
How long has been vacant?
I don't.
Has it been vacant ever since or is?
Yes.
Approve request number two-three dash zero-one-five-zero-six.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, request number two-three dash zero-one-five-zero-six is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seriously, I have a type of action for agenda item number nine.
Motion for adoption of findings of fact, conclusions of law, decision and order for agenda item number nine.
Second, there's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, the findings of that conclusions, law decisions in order adopted. Commissioners, similarly, may I have a type of action for them, item number ten, for agenda item number fifteen?
Motion is for adoption of decision and order for agenda items ten, with fifteen inclusive.
Second, there's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations hearing and seeing that my own, but I, the motion carries, decision in order for agenda item number ten through agenda item number fifteen inclusive are adopted. Moving into our adjudication, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Daniel Jacob, Deputy Preparation Counsel on the Office of City and County of Honolulu.
Good afternoon, I'm calling agenda item number sixteen, LCB two-two dash zero-zero-eight-two, Claphamita.
I represent to the commission that we have had arranged for a Korean interpreter. Nice to meet you, my apologies, I'm Charles, you know, Charles C O, who's been retained to help Miss Lauren Kim at the licensee.
Good afternoon, could you state and spell your names for the record?
Uh, Lauren Kim.
It's spelling.
A U, I D, K I M.
Thank you.
And I'm an interpreter for helping hands away bilingual access line, Charles Hill, H I L L, it's last name, Charles, the H A R, Elliot.
Mr. Jacobs, could you please read the charge?
Yeah, charge one. Honor about June third, twenty twenty-two, from the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensees employee Chi Su Kim, whose on-look licensee is strictly accountable for, under rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point oh one sub A, consume liquor while on duty on the licensed premises in violation of rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point zero one sub B of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu. Charge two, honor them all, yes.
Yes.
This is what I wrote.
Yeah. The I'm gonna, yeah, you should be in an egg. You were similar. Something, you have to name, hey, Sukin, in Cheshu. You're having so, that's something chicken, I'm in the, so they give me, so she get, I like a shit dog, who we ban, I'm on, oh, and Jay, Sam, but Sam, that's he, I said, Sam, that's he, she, she, I, oh, he, and he, and she, go 그리고 일하면서 일을 하는 시간에 그 면허증은 가지 못해, he, 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 we, one, I, she, both, oh, Sam, that's he, I, she, I, she, I, John, oh, he, be because we did, took you, on the, to you, oh, we, one, I'm, that she, I said, tell me, yeah, two, one, ten, and
Mr. Mr. Daniels, what we're going to do is so that we can make sure everyone understands, we're gonna go one charge at a time, okay? Is that fine for you, Mr. Hill, we're gonna do one charge at a time?
Yes, it's too much to remember, especially without pre-preparation.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, um, Mr. Hill, miss your, miss Kim can either accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead no contest for charging.
So they got you, they got one, you're, 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 tell me, so, yeah, I'm, uh, kept a, in, don't, I see, I'm, I mean, two, one, ten, and, I, it's, and, I mean, and, well, no contest.
And I
Tell Ms Kim that I don't, when they're reading the charge, they're not specifically stating. That she may have turned on and off lights. The law itself lists, right, commit uh investigator liquor um. Not limited to sound of alarms, flashing of lights, or using a public address announcer. So that's just written in the law. We're not, I don't think anyone is saying she did that.
Yeah, this is. Yeah, as she said, um, I accept that there was a violation of the law. I accept the violation of the law, however, uh. Why would I talk to my guests about me breaking the law or our establishment breaking the law? There was nothing like that going on.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you. Um, Mr. Jacob, can you please run charge number three?
On about June third, twenty twenty two, nine forty five P M in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee told to have all interior rooms or enclosed areas and dispenser or battery licensed premises where liquor is sold, served, or consumed. instructed in a manner as to commit a full view of the interior of the room. Through a transparent window on the entry door or on the wall in violation of rule three dash eighty four. There's seventy two point three of the rules of the liquor commission, the city and county of Honolulu.
Yes, um, actually, uh.
So first, before she can explain, which we will allow you to do, she needs to. Accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead no contest.
No contest again for this charge, and my explanation is if you.
After, we're gonna accept the charge first, then he will ask you to provide it, then we will uh give you some chance to. So I need a motion to accept the chart of the no contest fee.
Second.
Mister Jacobs, your recommendation for charge three, please?
This is a first time violation, recommendation is five hundred dollar fine. Licenses facility has karaoke rooms, there is windows to the karaoke rooms, however, posters were covering.
I have one karaoke room, and that room does have a window in the door, and um. That day, I have a, I had a new type beer that I was selling. And so I had a poster for that beer, and I put it right on the window because I wanted my customers to see that as they went into the karaoke.
Because the, the, the room is like a back door, but back door also just like the character room, so.
Question I would have currently. At this point in time, is the poster of a new beer or a new product currently on that window?
No, 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 there's nothing there. After that, I stopped that practice.
I'll note for the commission's information that the picture taken by the investigators the day up does show a Bud Light seltzer. On the front of the mirror, however, on the backside of the mirror, there's a titleist poster. Uh, so it looks like there is two posters.
So, um, I'm going to make a motion for the liquor commission to go into deliberation.
Point of order, we don't need a motion to deliberate. All right, next. Okay, thank you. We're back on the record. Thank you for allowing us to deliberate. Do we have any further comments, uh, questions or?
Um, so I am going to um make my determinations, but I'm also going to. Give a short entrance at the end, okay? So, uh, Mr. Hill, you can um let your Ms Kim know. So for charge number one, I am going to make a motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Yeah, for charge number two, I'm also going to make a motion to accept the recommended fine of one thousand dollars. For charge number three, I'm going to recommend a letter of reprimand be issued for charge number three. And what I would want you to tell your client is. Going forward, make sure there's no posters or anything on the windows we've seen in any of those spaces.
Um, Commissioner, could you um state that again in the form of one motion?
Motion to approve uh the recommended fine for charge one. Thousand dollar charge for fine two. And issue a letter of reprimand or charge three with the understanding that no future.
Second. Uh, there's been a motion, a second, and the objection reservations, hearing and seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries. Uh, fine of five hundred dollars will be issued for charge number one. A fine of one thousand dollars would be issued for charge number two, and a letter of reprimand will be issued, issued for charge number three and agenda item number sixteen. Thank you.
I understand and accept.
Uh, calling agenda item number seventeen, L C B two two dash zero one zero six, work play L L C.
Good afternoon, uh, my name is Phil Pashay, I'm the owner of.
You spell your uh H A S H A.
Mister Jacobs, can you please read the charge?
On or about August eleventh, twenty twenty two, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee utilized an electronic or otherwise recorded payroll registration. For the purpose of keeping employee time cards or other adequate records. In accordance with rule three dash eighty two dash thirty eight sub or point four. Without first obtaining the administrator's approval and violation of rule three dash eighty two dash thirty eight point four sub C. Of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Sorry, Mister Hasha. How would you like to uh plead for the charge? Motion to accept the plea.
Second. There's been a motion, a second, and the objections, reservations, hearing, seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, the plea is accepted.
Mister Jacobs, your recommendation?
This is a first time violation, the recommended plan is two hundred fifty.
Mister Hasha, do you have any explanations?
Yeah, I mean, this is, we use toast, which is like a worldwide. Top P U S system, it forces them to sign in and clock in where they could take any orders. Or anything of that nature. I'm still a little confused to the intent of this law versus a handwritten clock in. Lock out, but the next day I did contact the liquor commission, fill out the form and turn it in as soon as I knew about it.
So based off of that, you have said that you um. Once you found out about it, you did contact the liquor commission and you have. Move forward with getting the administration's approval for using this new system.
Did that first thing the next morning, as soon as I I came in that morning, learned about the charge. I did the liquor commission immediately and turned in.
Um, my motion is going to be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number seventeen.
Second.
Then a motion, a second, and the objective reservations, hearing, seeing none, I also vote I. Uh, the motion is, the motion carries a letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number seventeen, thank you. Uh, calling agenda item number eighteen, L C B two two dash zero one zero seven, work play L L C. Uh, can you state your name again?
Mister Jacobs, could you please read the charge?
On or about August eleventh, twenty twenty two, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee employed Justin K Popop in a section of the license premises where liquor is sold, served, or consumed. Without certain playing being properly registered with the commission in violation of rule three dash eighty two dash thirty eight point five sub B. The rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of.
Mister Hasha, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, and the objections, reservations, hearing, seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, the plea is accepted.
Uh, Mister Jacobs, your recommendation?
This is a first time violation, the recommended minus three hundred and fifty dollars.
Mister Hasha, any explanations?
The only explanation I would give for this is, this is a very well respected bartender, worked at a lot of different places. Uh, kind of a high exologist, uh, he showed our manager a blue card, but it wasn't a replay that we. That we've recognized that now. The next day, we went through, we checked everybody, we got a copy of theirs and put them in their employee folders. And made that scene of practice.
So the blue card that was shown was active, just not for your left.
And that was an oversight.
Sir Jacob, do you have anything in the file that shows if there, if when they asked for the card, if it stated. Where it was for, I'm not sure if the card did or not.
He did not show a part of that.
Yeah, when asked, the investigative report provides when asked for his Honolulu Liquor Commission registration card, the mail stated that he did not have it on his person's. Investigator later found, uh, texted a picture of the mail's registration card, which was for uh two separate licensed premises, not. Uh, not this licensee, um, and then after that happened. The liquor commissioner investigators witnessed that individual go make a drink.
If I wait after.
Yes.
Alright. So, I guess it's glad you fixed it, and now we know, and it's there, it is somewhat of a hard thing, but. You know, wanna make sure they're all registered for the right place, and you'll have it on there.
That I understand.
My motion will be to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number eighteen.
Second.
There are motion in a second, and the objections, reservations, hearing, seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries a fine of three hundred and fifty dollars will be issued for agenda item. Calling agenda item number nineteen, L C B one nine dash zero zero eight seven, Misty One. Is there anyone here for agenda item number nineteen, Misty One? Could you please call aside? Thank you.
I'll represent to the commission as um the licenses being called in the hall. Physical service was made on this individual on July twenty fourth, twenty twenty. Subsequently, there was a email sent to um an attorney who's represented, he's not um. Representing them more in February eighth, twenty twenty three. Uh, I guess. Seeing that the licensee was served at their establishment. I guess I'd ask for default, however, the commission was to continue this because my notice does indicate that. The letter was emailed and mailed to um an attorney who's no longer of record. I'd have no problem with denying default, I'm trying to reschedule this, but the default would be appropriate, they're not here.
Uh, should we can either uh make a motion for entry of default judgment and then also consider penalty. Um, we can continue the matter, or we could make a motion for entry of default judgment, but delay the penalty phase to see if. A representative from Misty One would show up for the penalty base.
Excuse me.
You know, I will mention to the commission too that these are fairly serious allegations.
They have a history of violations?
I know these would be first time I found.
There were, is it correct that date that is February twenty third, twenty nineteen? I'm sorry, so on the, on the, um, agenda item, it says date of violation is February twenty third, twenty nineteen. Is that correct? It's three years ago.
My understanding is that is correct.
Let me explain what, what's happening. So Misty One was located on Kona Street. Misty One is the same premises that my client, which is training Hawaii By Night, applied for the application. However, because it required an authorized agent, I was named as the authorized agent for Misty One. But Mister Who, if you recall, represents Misty One and showed up when they first objected to the transfer of license. I kept getting the letters, and the establishment shut down right about twenty twenty because. The landlord has been looking for a tenant since about twenty, about twenty. So that's why they were served at the premises, they weren't operating for the last six months. So that would explain why the violations in twenty.
Do we, do we know if this establishment even exists at this point?
It does not exist. They closed out Hawaii By Night, which is my client. Replaced them on a transfer of license, because they finally agreed to transfer the license. Which I frankly now have some real concerns about because I don't think these people are gonna get attached to it, so.
So I don't know if anybody knows the answer to this, so since they, I know you had, I know you told me an answer one time before, and I can't remember, but. I think you said there's something that goes through.
What happens is even if they no longer have a license. If they applied for a new license someplace else, the licensing investigators are trained very well, so they flag it. They put down, hey, they were, you know, they, they were at this establishment, and but that's only for the owners. So if the owners come up and they're, they're with another entity, apply for a license, it's fine, so.
So I guess I would make a motion to. Make a default judgment for agenda item number nineteen, charges one and two. And then find out what um the recommended fine, okay, so I gotta make the motion, and then after that, I'll ask the question, okay?
There's a motion, a second, and the objections, reservations, hearing, seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, um, entry of defaults. Uh, there will be an entry of default for agenda item number nineteen.
And Mister Jacobs, so I guess, does that mean all your recommendations are for charge one and charge two?
Uh, both of these are first time offenses, both recommended fines are five hundred dollars, so a total of one thousand dollars. The first charge is in regards to the licensee permitting um someone other than a registered dancer. To have their body exposed, in this particular instance, investigators, after shining a light. Uh, into an area, found an individual with his pants unbuckled, uh, there was a condom wrapper um present. And there was um, the individual's box was exposed at the time, the investigators shined a flashlight. Count two is in regards to the failure to properly light that premises. Uh, the investigative reports indicate that they needed their flashlights to properly inspect. Again, these are both first time violations, recommended fine for each of them is five hundred dollars for total of one thousand dollars.
Mister I, question in regards to. If you, if we agree to the stipulated fines, if the licensee is no longer in business. And not operating, the fine becomes where they cannot collect it.
Now, uh, an attempt will be made to uh serve the corporation or L L C that held the license. There are a, a number of attempts will be made. The corporation or L L C that held the license, there are, a, a number of attempts will be made.
Right.
Which is not Mister Huge. I mean, we can and he would be, you know, fully to sign for it. But yeah, no, there's, there's a, we, we make attempts to, uh, serve sometimes, uh, uh, referred to a collection agency, whatever, but basically it becomes. A part of the record that, uh, uh, a D N O with those fines were is unsatisfied, is associated with this entity.
Okay. So my motion will be then for agenda nineteen to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge one. And five hundred dollars for charge two. With a total of one thousand dollars for agenda item number nineteen.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second and the objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries. Fine of one thousand dollars, um, broken down to five hundred dollars for, for charge number one, five hundred dollars to charge number two will be issued for agenda item number nineteen. Calling agenda item number twenty, L C B one, nine dash zero, three, one, zero, misty one.
Represented the commission that this, um, is a more recent violation, the notice of hearing was served on the licensee on January ninth, twenty twenty-three. This year, I asked for default.
Uh, since this is a, a separate agenda item, could we make a call to the outside? For the record. There's been a call for anyone to appear for agenda number twenty, there is no appearance, um.
On before I make a, um, motion on the action, I wanna also confirm that. I know this is a separate, a later violation, but this violation also occurred on August twenty-third, twenty nineteen. Correct, Mister Jacobs in your file?
Right, there are certain worries.
Okay. My motion is going to be to approve default judgment for agenda item number twenty for charge one and charge two.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second and the objection for reservations hearing seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries. Uh, default will be entered for agenda item number twenty, charge, charges one and charges two.
Um, Mister Jacobs, what is your recommendation for these?
Both of these charges are again, first time violations, recommended fine for each of them is five hundred dollars for total of one thousand dollars. Charge one involves, um, licensee allowing an individual who is not performing as an exotic dancer. Uh, to show a part of their, uh, genitals, in this case, investigators found a woman at her top down. A second charge is, uh, in regards to again failing to properly light the interior. And once again, for this investigation, uh, investigators having used their flashlights to properly see. So does that? Make it a second violation because we just. So the, in order for it to be considered a second violation, there has to be a finding of first violation to have occurred, that didn't happen until just moments ago. So this would still be considered a first, however, if they were to come back on another, that would be a third.
Okay. So. My comment would be obviously right, they say, these charges are very similar as the one before. Um, I mean, even where the lighting had not changed for that licensee at that point, even though it is. Five, six months later. My motion will be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge one and five hundred dollars for charge two. For a total of one thousand dollars for agenda number twenty.
I'll also mention for the commission, my only make recommendations.
Uh, I second.
There's been a motion in a second and the objective reservation hearing seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries. A fine of five hundred dollars to be issued for charge one, fine of five hundred dollars to be issued for charge two for an aggregate fine of one thousand dollars to be issued for agenda item number. Calling agenda item number twenty-one, L C V two, zero dash zero, one, two, four, Club Secrets.
Good afternoon. Chair members of commission, keep huge for the licensee. Wait reading of the charge, we're gonna deny this charge and ask a piece of for the adjudication hearing and will waive the.
Reading of the.
Thank you, Mister. So agenda item number twenty-one will be continued for a contested case hearing at the next available calendar date. Calling agenda item number twenty-two, L C V two, two dash zero, zero, one, one, Club Secret, Mister Huge.
Again, uh. Good afternoon, chair of members of commission, keep huge to the licensee. As the discharge will waive reading of charge interplay if no contest. Asked that the, um, penalty face be scheduled on the same day as the adjudication.
So I think we still have to take a motion to accept the plea.
Second.
There are motion in a second, the objective reservations hearing seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries the pleas accepted.
And then we'll make a motion that we, um.
No, you can just state that the penalty phase is.
Yeah, make a, the penalty phase will be. Determined or taken up when we take charge number, I mean, um, agenda item number twenty-one.
And the item number twenty, calling agenda, agenda item number twenty-three, Melody L L C, L Z B two, zero dash zero, zero, two, six.
Afternoon members of the commission, Chelsea Maja, saying on behalf of the licensee. Um, unfortunately, the owner of the licensee couldn't make it today, she had a family emergency. Are we agreed away with the reading of the charging? And would like to enter a no contest.
Motion to accept quickly.
Second.
Then a motion and a second, then the objections or reservations hearing seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries the pleas accepted.
Mister Jacobs, your recommendations?
This violation occurred on January tenth, twenty twenty-one, the licensees employee consumed liquor while on duty, this is licensee's second violation, the recommended fine is one thousand dollars. The first violation occurred in January thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, where the licensee paid three hundred dollars.
Sorry, Miss Maja?
So the licensee has a policy of prohibiting its employees from consuming alcohol on premises while they are. On duty. Um, unfortunately. This employee did not follow the company policy and she was immediately terminated.
So. Miss Maja, I know this happened back in twenty twenty, but there has been, um, like a second time issue of this, I mean, your. Client needs to understand that, you know, these things are very important to us, we wanna make sure that they don't happen. And, you know, let her know that it, it's gonna be kinda costly, so my recommended, my, um, motion is to be to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item twenty-three.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second and the objective reservation hearing seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries a fine of one thousand dollars will be issued for agenda item for twenty-three. Agenda item number twenty-four, L C V two, two dash zero, one, three, nine, Club Rosa. I'm here for. Let me say your name.
Jasmine Teal. Mister Jacobs, could you please read the charge?
Honor about September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to have the street hand or primary entrances to licensed premises unlocked during the time customers are on the premises. In violation of rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-two point two, the rules of the liquor mission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Sorry, Mister Teal?
Yes.
Oh, would you like to plead, you can, uh, accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead no contest?
I want to explain, I have to say no contest.
So yes, if you plead no contest, we will allow you to explain after he provides a recommendation, okay? Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second and the objection to reservations, hearing and seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries the pleas accepted.
Mister Jacobs, your recommendations, please?
It's a first time violation, the recommended fines five hundred dollars.
She missed you, your explanation, please.
Oh, so. I'm, I don't know exactly how to explain about doing the second one also. But we were trying to stop things. And so we have gotten, like, this wasn't a charge from us per se, like, we were subleasing, so this. This person that was subleasing didn't understand the rules. So she had gotten this infraction and we don't know, like. That's on us because we're still like subleasing her or anything, so we don't know like how to go. About this.
Yes, so, okay, so. What you're saying basically is. Make sure I understand. That the. Charge that's for Club Rosa, A N K Club Boomerang. Is someone that you are subleasing this space to? But I guess my question to you is, is the liquor license? That covers that space covered by you?
It was under us, yes.
So it's under you, so, so the licensed space. That they're using is technically your licensed space.
Mister Jacobs, is there anything in the record to reflect the fact that the investigator knew? That it was not the licensee. That was serving alcohol. Um, or did that not get picked?
No, I don't think that's, uh, when a investigator arrives at a licensed premises, I believe they expect that licensed premises to be in conformity to the law. Um, and in this case, they noticed a one female and one male having a meal together with, uh, doors locked.
I guess one of my other questions to you, Mister Teal, is do you know if? I know that they're leasing this space from you, but do you know if there were, if there was two individuals in that space drinking with? Uh, doors locked?
I have no idea, I wasn't there. But, um, I just know that she didn't know that you had to have the doors unlocked, I don't know if there was alcohol involved, I don't know anything. I just know that she didn't understand that you couldn't have the doors locked while still being inside. Uh, the property.
Then, on this sublease, were you allowing? The sub, let's see, to use your liquor license to sell liquor?
After. Like. When she's somebody.
You said the club, uh, Club Rosa was subleasing to a. A, a tenant, correct?
No, we were subleasing to Club Rosa.
Okay, sorry, other way around. Um, did, as part of that sublease, did you know that Club Rosa was using your liquor license to serve alcohol?
Yes.
Do you, did you check to see if whether that was legal or not?
Um, I don't, I don't, I didn't know if. They checked, but. Uh, we didn't think that it was an issue. We don't know how you guys do the subsidies, I thought they, you have to change the liquor license if someone else bought. So we don't know about the subsidies, if you guys have a law with subsidies, we didn't know about that.
Well, the liquor license is specific to the entity holding that license. That, under the rules, that, that licensee is the only one permitted to actually act and operate under that license.
Okay.
The other thing would be right that, um, under the rules, right, just for future information at this point, right? Um, your floor plan that you have is your licensed space is the area that you are liable for. Right, no matter who's subleasing it, who's using it, that's your space realistically.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm not sure if it may help, I believe the licensee is, and, has a possession of a different charge. That charge might relate to, uh, what she's just discussed. Of course, I'll remind the commission that we're here for purposes of law.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't have another charge before at this time.
I am not aware of another charge, however, I've just been informed that there's one in, in the papers. But that's not here, it's not the worst, right, thank you.
Okay. So I mean. You still, I mean, it is going to be, um. Somewhat pricey for you folks because technically you're in charge of that space. And you know, you know the chart, the rules of the liquor commission, anyone that you allowed to use that space, which could be a violation or not. Is something that you're liable for because it's your space. My motion will be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for, uh, agenda item number four, twenty-four. Mister Jacobs, what was the recommendation again?
Five hundred, I mean, direction, five hundred dollars, okay, second.
There's been a motion and second and the objection for reservation hearing seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries a fine of five hundred dollars will be issued for agenda item number twenty-four.
Thank you. Okay, you're finished, thank you. Yeah, I mean, if you have questions, um, can contact the administration. Um, at their regular business hours, eight, two, four, because I'm not sure. In regards to the other stuff there, like the leasing and things like that.
This, this is what we're here for.
Oh, yeah, okay. So the second one is not today or?
We don't have a second charge. It's on our calendar.
Not for. Club Rosa or. I don't see anything else on our agenda for Club Rosa. Or Club Boomerang.
And it's not, I don't see it in the notice of hearing.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I mean, I, I can't really help you, of course, but it sounds like there's another issue that you may come back for another day. But we're here today for purposes of the locker lives.
Sorry.
On agenda item number twenty-five, L C V two, two dash zero, one, three, seven, that's okay, screw.
Good afternoon again, chair members, commission, keep huge for the licensee waiver you need to charge interplay.
Motion to accept the plea, second.
There are motion in a second, any objections, reservations, hearing, seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries the pleas accepted.
Mister Jacobs, your recommendations?
Uh, this is a first time violation, uh, recommended fines two hundred and fifty dollars, this violation occurred on September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, and the licensee failed to make time, proper time for adventures.
So this happens to be the two owners, two of the three owners, um. What happened was, the liquor commission vest scares were called because the back door was locked. And the reason they locked the back door and we've advised them, they need to leave it open during business hours is because. There's homeless in the area, this is Market City. Shopping center, so this is next to Fujioka. So this used to be the old formage of downstairs. Yeah, so, um. When the liquor commissioner investigators came over, the two owners had forgotten to sign. They, they were. They, they did not appropriately sign out, so that's what.
Okay, I'll, I'll represent, um, the investigative report, um, requested time cards for all employees, an individual then handed a clipboard with time sheets for the month of September. While reviewing the time sheets, only two employees were clocked in for the entire month of September.
That's consistent.
Okay, are they the only two employees?
No, they're, they basically operate with. The two, the three owners and two employees. It's a very, it's not a very large space. I don't know if you've ever been in the old fromage of space, but it's a very small space.
I'm trying to think exactly where that is in that shopping center.
Where Fujioka is.
Okay, 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 I don't see, okay. So trying to think where the back door leads out to in there, it just leads out to, like, the hall corridor, right?
Right.
Okay, okay. So, but again, the two names that are listed on the charge, those are actually two of the three owners.
Correct.
And I guess my question currently, Mr. Huge, they do know, right, that they need to be, if they're gonna be working?
They know now.
Okay, um. So. You know, there are. There are two of the primary owners and part of the license as well as they.
We can look at it, they should know better, right?
My motion is going to be to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number twenty-five.
Second.
There are motion and a second and the objection for reservation, giving seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars to be issued for agenda item number twenty-five. Thank you, Mr. Huge. Calling agenda item number twenty-six, L C V two, one dash zero, zero, three, eight, Royal Hawaiian Golf Club.
Again, good afternoon, chair members, commission, keep huge for the licensee wavering in charge interplay of no contest.
Motion to accept the plea, second.
There are motion in a second and the objections, reservations, hearing, seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries the pleas accepted.
Mister Jacobs, can you please? Give your recommendation?
This violation occurred on November thirtieth, twenty twenty, when the licensee failed to timely submit their annual employee list, this is a first time violation, the recommended fine is two hundred and fifty.
So, uh, Royal Hawaiian Golf Club is now managed by, um, Guy Yamamoto, if that name sounds familiar, he's. One of only six people in Hawaii to play in the Masters tournament because he has a, he's still an amateur golfer. And won an amateur, national amateur tournament, twenty-plus years ago. Uh, Guy has represented to me. That they mailed it in. But then the commission called and said that they didn't get it. So, uh, you know, those were the circumstances and. The reason I give you Mister Yamamoto's background is, uh. I've been dealing with him for at least ten years. Because he does, he managed Milwaukee and then moved to Royal, he's very proud of it.
Mister Jacobs, is there anything in the file showing or in your file showing when? Mr. Jacobs, is there anything in the file showing or in your file showing when the commission did receive it?
My understanding is the commission never received the twenty twenty A F E L. However, they did receive the twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two.
Okay. Um, Shaquille, do you know if Royal Hawaiian, I'm assuming the. Restaurant area was open during this time period?
There were, there were, there were open. They just, Mr. Yamamoto believes that. He said it was mailed in and the commission said it was never received, but the their track record were twenty one and twenty two, I think, speaks to the fact that. You know, they're, they're compliant licenses.
Yeah, I mean, besides, right, twenty, back in twenty twenty, we've had a lot of guys around, not knowing if they got it.
Yeah, now you have to bet and you said that they definitely send. So I asked them whether it was an oversight, so.
Okay, my motion will be to um issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number twenty six.
Second.
Then a motion and a second, any objections, reservations, hearing, seeing none. I also vote I the motion carries a letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number twenty six.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number twenty seven, L C V two two dash zero zero six five Huang J Corporation.
I represent to the commission that this was set for contested case hearings. However, the licensee has requested a Korean interpreter. The interpreter wasn't allowed to stay as long as we'd like, so we'd ask it to be set for March thirtieth, at which time we believe we can provide another Korean interpreter.
Sorry, is that March thirtieth calendar date acceptable?
Yes, it certainly is.
Okay, thank you. So agenda item number twenty seven will be continued for contested case hearing on March thirtieth. Calling agenda item number twenty eight, L C V two two dash zero zero eight four Huang J Corporation.
Again, I represent to the commission that I'd like this to be continued until March thirtieth until such time we have a Korean interpreter.
Mr. I, much the rate is acceptable.
It is.
Uh, agenda item number twenty eight is then continued to the March thirtieth calendar date. Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Moving into other business, calling agenda item number thirty liquor administrator legislative updates, Mr. I.
Uh, the main update I have is that today bills sixteen instead of house bills. Sixteen and seventeen were heard and those are the two variations of the cocktails to go seventeen, which basically gave the liquor commissions. The opportunity to opt in or out of cocktails to go was deferred so that that bill is dead. Sixteen has been moved out. That is the ones that as a matter of state law will permit cocktails to go. And also include the ability of retail dealers to make roadside delivery. And and my preference is I liked sixteen better because that just changed the law. We wouldn't have to do rulemaking to. Uh, reinstate the the governor E Gay's cocktails to go. Don't hunt with that one. What is here? What the important was actually House Bill one fifty nine. Uh, it's next stop. That's the one that will um deal with the notarization of renewal applications. And that one, uh, we're just waiting for its assignment to uh finance. You know, I cleared this first hearing. That's all I got.
Are you thinking this or any questions from the mission? Calling agenda item number thirty one liquor administrator, administrative committee, Mr. I.
I don't have anything to add to the rather lengthy reports that I circulated earlier today. Let you guys.
Missions, any questions based on those? Okay, we see none. Um, our hearing is now adjourned.